We are going to call the meeting into order. Do you understand the state's pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have called the meeting into order. First thing we're going to do is we're going to open up the floor to anyone that would be open to public forum in two minutes, if anyone would like to speak about anything.
And I do believe, are you Alyssa?
I am.
Okay.
Obviously I was here for a little while, I got lost upstairs.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Alyssa with Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation. Thanks for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. Okay. Hi, I just wanted to stop the hype and say, um, thank you. You guys have been loyal contributors for a number of years and we are very appreciative of everything you've done for Smith. Okay, so, in your packets, I just wanted to quick provide an overview of what we've been up to. It's actually Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation's 30th anniversary this year, so we wanted to make sure we're touching base with a lot of our, um, great partnerships, of which you guys are one. So, in your packets, on the left-hand side, in the far back, you'll see there's a mix of logos and stuff happening here because we just rebranded. We were breaking new ground for 30 years and we are now growing, so we are a sprout out of southeastern Minnesota. So, we're pretty excited about that. Um, we have this overview sheet that shows, you know, as organizations grow over time, um, you know, as leadership changes, now we've, Tim Penny has been at the helm for about nine years, um, things ebb and flow within organizations, but we're very proud to be able to say that we, um, have been able to track that over 30 years, we have helped create over 7,000 jobs within our 20-county region. We've helped over 130, um, community groups take action. One of those groups is the Winthrop Area Foundation. And then also, we've helped over 100,000 kids and their families be better prepared to enter kindergarten and, of course, become a great next generation and our next workforce. So, we're very excited about that. And I'm sorry, you said I only have two minutes. I'll be really quick. So, just to bring it in, sort of what we've been doing recently in your area, we still have three main focus areas on the back of this Sibley County investment sheet, gives a lot of examples. Um, so what we've been up to within entrepreneurship, which is our largest area that we've supported, uh, we put about, about $2 million back into the region each year with an entrepreneurship. Um, we recently supported a grant to Sibley County, uh, to basically have a county EDA position to go in, work with each of the cities, to help, um, with different entrepreneurship resources, business resources, things of that nature. So, that's been pretty exciting. Uh, we also are still a lender. Uh, a couple of the recent loans that we've given, one was to the JIT company in Green Isle. Uh, we've also helped Hometown Bakery in Gibbon. So, there's a lot of different ways we help entrepreneurship, more is on the back of your sheet. Then, the next largest area that we support is early childhood education. Um, one of the biggest ways we support that is by providing, uh, books to children, um, actually putting them in their hands, letting them take them home, promoting child-parent bonding, um, things of that nature. So, if you know of any, typically these go to ECFE programs, libraries, where they're actually giving the books out at the library, not keeping them at the library. Um, but if you know of anybody who has a program like that, please do send them our way, we have a lot of partnerships. Um, we also have supported your local school district with a chance to grow curriculum, which is really focused on, uh, movement within the classroom and really capitalizing on that kids are not made to sit still, and so how can you use that to your benefit? Um, which has gone really well, from what I've heard, uh, within the school district. And, other than that, we're very focused on helping childcare providers, uh, get onto that parent-aware rating system that you guys have probably all heard of, I think I heard it three times on my drive over this evening. Um, but it's, a parent-aware is a system that the state has started to rate childcare providers, and so we're providing free training for home-based childcare providers, um, so they can get onto that, uh, curriculum as well, because it is hard being home-based. They work long hours, um, so we're happy to bring that training to them, and we're actually, we just received another grant from Mardig, so we'll be coming back to Sibley County to do an additional training, uh, free of charge, so that's pretty exciting. Um, okay, and then our smallest area that we support is community development, and again, that would be the Winthrop Area Foundation, also there's the Henderson Community Foundation. Um, what we do for them is really the boring stuff. We do the back-office work, we are the 501(c)(3). Um, we do get audited every year, we make sure they follow the rules, uh, which basically lets them do what they want and make change in your community. So, it's a pretty exciting program. Um, we also provide a lot of incentives. For example, currently, the Winthrop, um, Area Foundation has an opportunity to apply for a $10,000 grant for your community, so we do provide a lot of different dollars and incentives. So, I'll be on the lookout for that. And we also have a paint program within our community development area. Uh, for example, Arlington last year applied for a community mural in their community center. So, keep that in mind. Okay, so that's a very quick overview of what we've been doing. I know I went over my two minutes, but, um, do you guys have any questions? We are so very thankful for all you've done.
Well, thank you for coming down. Does anyone, any, have any questions for?
I've provided lots of information in here for you to look over.
That's a good overview of a lot of things.
I know.
You can take it over and read it.
Oh, great. And just so you know, um, we are starting a new strategic plan in January, we're going to be rolling out a new grant round for small cities, so something to keep in mind, that will be starting again in, did I say January, I mean July? July. So, sorry I went over my two minutes, but there's lots of information in here, we greatly appreciate all you do.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Great, thank you.
That's a long drive for that.
You guys are great.
Keep moving along here, if there's nobody else that wants to speak. Um, the agenda, let's establish the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to put out. Excuse me, Don?
No, sir.
Okay, Lyle?
No.
Julie?
No.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
Nope.
And Jenny?
I just have this resolution approving the county project for under C, New Business.
So, under C?
New Business.
And then I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and accept that?
So moved.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, consent agenda. Has everybody had time to take a look at everything on there? Regular meetings, special meeting, the claims for the month, any questions on the claims?
No, I didn't see anything.
Pete, did it? And then the liquor licenses? Anybody have any question on those?
Everybody's got everything turned down, they just need to be sent into the state and when we get them back, they'll be submitted, so.
And then the approval for the side permit for county windows, that's in there?
The planning commission met and recommended approval.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded by Pete. Any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to, uh, public hearings, we have the truth of taxation meeting tonight. Um, I guess before we get started on that, Jenny, I'm just gonna have you give a rundown as to, Cam was here because his taxing went up considerably. And Dale and I, Dale mainly was speaking to him a little bit, bringing him up to speed why that was. Maybe just as long as we're, uh, this is, uh...
Do you want to open the hearing, or, no? What's it, you don't want to open the hearing yet?
Oh, yes, I'm gonna open the hearing, I'm sorry. We're going to open the hearing?
Okay.
Now we can talk about it.
I, well, as Cam probably knows, we've lost a considerable amount of tax base under that.
No, he doesn't know that.
Oh, okay.
He wasn't aware of that.
Okay. Well, as of right now, we have lost a considerable amount of tax base, um, due to the egg chemical containment issue, um, some of the egg land in UFC, Winfield, and crop production is tax-exempt as of right now, which makes our pie a little bit smaller and everybody else has to pay a little bit more because we have less area to spread it around in. Um, I just got an email from Gary Carlson today saying that there is a potential special meeting on the horizon that the, um, tax bill potentially is on there, but as usual, there are no guarantees. So, right now, our council is going forward under the pretense that we are losing that egg containment this year and we will budget accordingly. When we set the levy originally, we were going under the pretense that we would get that egg containment land back and we would be able to budget for the things that we need to do in 2017. Because it doesn't look like that, we met in special, in a work session on November 14th and proposed about $72,000 in cuts to bring our levy up to a 3% increase over last year versus a 14%, which we had originally had. Um, stay tuned, see what happens.
That's the main reason you saw the increase in your taxes, and the actual taxable model coming up should be considerably less than that.
Wouldn't we see that?
The final statement, when the final statement comes out.
When does it usually come out, January or?
March. March.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I heard today there might be a special session convened before the end of the year?
Potentially.
Potentially.
But they did say even if it was convened, even if it was passed, it might be too quickly for the council to act.
If they do it this year, we could still get it on. If they don't do it until the first part of the regular session in January, that might be too late to get it on. But if they do it yet this year, we will get that exemption back.
So, what would we do if we got it back?
Everybody's taxes, this, yeah, we can't do anything at this point, everyone would get a real nice tax statement.
Tax break this year.
Yeah. Uh, if we had had a zero levy this year, your taxes, what I was told by the people at the county and the state, is that you're still looking at like about a 15% increase at a zero levy increase because of the loss of the tax capacity in the egg containment property. So, we had to take that into consideration and that's, I think, why we cut such a significant amount out of the proposed budget.
Do, uh, some of the people though, used to be that if they had a new house or did some big remodeling, they had a, a year or so before the tax?
A year in arrears, yeah.
Yeah, showed up and things like that.
This is not the case with this.
That is not the case.
And generally, if we were losing it for good, the state would have stepped in and granted us some transition aid, but because the full repeal is in the tax bill, they have just not addressed it.
You don't address much anyway.
Like Cam, I think it's coming.
The mic's on.
I think it's gonna happen.
It's the truth.
Nothing is guaranteed, and if for some reason it didn't get passed, we may look at making some adjustments next year.
Right, if we would lose it completely, we would have to make some significant changes, so.
So, do you have any other questions concerning that?
No, that pretty much, I guess I was just looking for why. Explained in parallel.
Did, was it explained well? Okay.
We'll just wait and see now, I guess.
Yeah, I'm curious too, because that was a considerable increase, so.
Twenty-six percent.
Yes.
Twenty-six percent, yeah.
That's a lot of groceries.
Yes. And you said, maybe we shouldn't talk about that, you know, but I'm curious, did that come just from the city of?
Yeah.
Yes. Everything else is either, well, the county's only about, um, just under 4% and the state, of course, went down, and school went down. So, it was all, not the city of Winter.
And that number will go down. It should go down considerably, but it'll still be...
He's a business, so he'll see 6%.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Which is probably, and nobody likes the increase, but...
Right. And if this goes through before the end of the year, it'll be a much more significant increase, so.
I think what you have is just an estimate, right?
It's, yeah, it's based on the proposed, yeah.
This is the time to talk about it.
Right.
And since we are talking about it, if you have no other questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, um, what would the council like to do? Would you like to just stand on the decisions we made earlier in our, um, in our work session and keep the cuts where they are?
I would.
And if that's the case, then, um, we can go ahead and...
Close the public hearing.
Oh, close the public hearing. Are there any more questions? If not, I will close the public hearing. And now we can act.
Just for the record, you're moving to New Business number eight?
Yes.
When we discussed this, you asked, you know, you asked several of us to talk to people we knew, and I was, I was really surprised to hear 26% increase. The people I talked to, most of it was nine, 10%.
Yeah, he's business, so he's double.
I think the initial went up more than residential.
Sorry, when you talk to people, they looked at the bottom number on their, on their sheet here, which on mine shows 10 because of the difference in numbers, but when you just take the city of Winthrop itself, it's 26%. The overall bill is 10%, and that's when, because I've been talking to people as well, and they said, well, it's not really that bad, and I said, well, look just at that portion of it. You can't do, you gotta look at each section, and that's what I'm saying, is 26%.
The test, this one.
Yeah.
On any of those, some impact of the taxable value of your...
His didn't change.
But didn't you?
His didn't change.
You said yours didn't change at all.
Didn't change at all.
That was the first thing I looked at.
You're not the only one, Cam.
Okay, well, we have to do business, the resolution adopted in by, tax levy, if we're going to leave the way it is, I think that's...
As the cuts stated in the work session, that's what's in the, in the levy, or in the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, can we give him an, uh, an answer of why his went up as much as?
Well, we tried to explain that.
Because it's commercial?
Well, that's part of it.
It's because they lost so much.
Yeah, because of the, the tax capacity.
They got, they got pushed off to...
Oh, with the containment, yeah, I know.
So, that is the main...
And that's not...
Oh, you and me both.
We, we've been working on this all this past year.
Trust me, you should have seen these guys up at the State House testifying, it was a thing to watch. Trust me, Jenny did a great job, the mayor did a good job, it was, it was very interesting to watch.
Yes.
I got a, I got a...
Was that you throwing stuff?
No, I was the one, I was the one that got in an argument with the lobbyist in the hallway, remember? Like, what do you mean?
All right, so...
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Thank you very much.
I'll entertain a motion.
So, move, motion, pass the budget for 19, or, 19, 2017?
6:53, 049.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
My only thought is, and, and my thought process has changed a little bit after the discussion tonight, but I probably talked to eight or nine people that said, nah, you know, my property taxes were okay, they weren't upset about it, and after thinking about that, I, I thought, do we want to look at some of those cuts that we made that were rather deep and try and even it out a little bit? But I didn't realize that it was making that big an impact for...
It is, like I said, it is a one-year cut.
Hopefully.
Well...
I'm not, I'm not taking, I'm not cutting it again next year, I'm not cutting, trust me. We'll cut somewhere, we'll cut somewhere else next year, we're not going after those same items again.
No, no.
It ain't happening. You gotta tighten belt. If it, it's one of those things we need to look at now that anything that can wait a year, waits.
Cam, your store has our, our full support, whatever we can do for you.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Very good?
I'm good.
Anyone else? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under New Business, can we look at the resolution accepting the donation of the Dr. Bauer dentist building and maybe?
I'll let Don and Mark.
So, this was brought to me by Mark's attention, the EDA have been working with the representatives of the Lois H. Bauer Trust. Uh, we have the Bauer building in town, it's been vacant for a while, uh, they have been kind enough to want to donate it to the city, uh, so the city can use it for whatever opportunities come up. Uh, accountants have been involved, it's been appraised, uh, we have all the documents ready to go. The benefits to the trust, of course, to donating it to the city is they will get a tax break. So, if you are agreeable to accepting the donation of the building, uh, what this will do is, first we'll thank the Lois H. Bauer Trust, second it'll authorize myself, Jenny, Mark to sign everything that we need to do to get the donation to go through. The representative of the trust is in Arizona, so the deed won't be signed for a week or two, I'll have to send the deed out for signature. We are also dealing with the power of attorney, so I'll have to get those documents, so, um, you accepting this tonight will allow us to get the final phases going.
Does anybody have any questions concerning this?
Yes, I do. Mark, you can maybe answer this, but I hear that building is in dire needs of repair.
No, it's actually in pretty good shape, Bob. That's a story I heard too. I should come up there just in case.
Basement flooded.
I heard the roof was leaking and everything was falling down.
I heard the same thing. Uh, the roof is not leaking, there's no water leaking in the building, uh, there's no mold in the building, the heat's been on, the lights and the power have all been on, the water's on, and, uh, it's been sitting vacant for many years, it's musty, you know, and it needs major remodeling, but I think it's got pretty good bones, you know, I think the, the roof's okay.
Nothing to mop and a vacuum couldn't do it.
Well, and a payloader, I think, yeah, there's some...
Well, that's pretty good.
Yeah, and I heard those same things, Bob. We've been in it, we, we hauled out a bunch of boxes and, and furniture they had.
They had a water main leak out front, what, two, three years back, and the rumor was that it flooded the basement, so.
That was the bank's water main, yeah.
I don't think there's a basement in that building.
There's not a basement in it.
Yeah.
There any, um, immediate plans or?
No, we've been working on this for about a year and a half, um, and Don's, Don's helped a lot here lately, uh, cutting through all of the mumbo jumbo that needs, you know, the legal stuff. So, no, I, it's, it's, if something comes along, we have control of it, you know, that we can, and the EDA is gonna talk about next month, the, if we, if this all goes through, it hasn't gone through yet, what, what are we gonna do with it? Are we gonna start working on it, are we gonna advertise it, are we gonna?
What's the rough square footage?
Oh, um... It's, it's 25 by 80, it's, it's probably 1,500, 1,600 square feet, yeah.
Who's, who's gonna own it, the EDA or Winthrop?
The city of Winthrop owns it, that's the, they have to donate it to the city, and this, and we would like the city to own it, um, you know, it'll, I'll come off the tax rolls when the city owns it. I don't think the taxes are a lot on it.
$44,000 would be...
Well, now, this year.
Yeah, so, so, but if the EDA owns it, then we have to pay taxes on it. But if the city owns it...
But that won't happen for two years, because they've already certified the taxes for the property, it could be sold by then, so.
Well, you always said it's good to have a spec building, so...
You know, it's sitting there doing nothing, you know.
So, who would go out and try and attract somebody?
That's my job, and, and all of our jobs, actually, uh, but we've already had some discussions with the local business, may or not be interested, and it just depends on how much work there needs to be done, and it needs a lot of work on the inside.
There's not a lot of big, open...
No, it's a small, it was a dental office, small rooms and...
We could make a coffee shop or a knick-knack store or...
Could, very well, you know, there's...
Expansion of the drugstore.
Right.
Expansion of the drugstore, there's all sorts of things.
Right, 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 right. I've always thought if you can move the drugstore in there and then you can take that, part where the drugstore is and make that into a overflow for Carmelitas and a gift shop for, you know, something, but...
That's why you paid the big money.
The big bucks, I got it, I got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions concerning that? Thank you.
I would like to thank the EDA for doing the legwork, and I'd like to thank Mr. Illinois for helping.
And also, um, the Bowers.
The Bowers. Reese has been very helpful, yeah.
Luthvisk's Restaurant.
Have you met Reese?
Oh, yeah.
There's a motion made?
I graduated.
Second.
And seconded to accept the donation?
Who made the motion?
Julie.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I might stay here.
Okay.
He's close, yeah.
Pretty close.
Safe steps. Oh, yeah, Luthvisk Restaurant, oh, that's so...
Nope, we got C yet.
County.
The resolution for the county.
Let's do the road.
Uh, Sibley County's gonna be overlaying county-state highway 33, because it's in city limits, they need our blessing. It will cost us nothing, we just need to give our approval, so.
I'll do that, it's a fine meeting.
From 15 to 19? From 15 to 19?
Which road is that?
I have no idea.
There's a name, there's a street though.
Oh, that's right, that was a big discussion.
Sibley. Sibley, isn't it?
And the sign is up.
The one by the wishing well.
Yes, by the wishing well.
All right, I'll...
He made a motion, is someone second?
Second.
There's a second, uh, second resolution, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, I'm sorry, not opposed, no, it is, yes. All right, and we're going to, um, City of Minnesota.
All right, Joe's been working on putting together a 10-year project list, um, Shannon and I, and I think you were in on that discussion at some point, uh, we would like to have a 10, yep, we would like to have a 10-year project list to help us set our rates, see what our bonding limits are and everything else. He actually has a 100-year list together, but we are, yes, we are gonna focus on, on the next 10 years, uh, because that will include county-state highway one by DFA, and it will also include highway 19. More on that next year. Um, we've been working on the Conklin Culvert, BNR was in to camera it today, they could not get the camera in because of the corrugated and whatnot. Gordy and Oscar are going to die it tomorrow, I told them we needed camera, we need to find somebody to get the camera, I would like to see what it looks like.
Where's the storm run?
Parallel?
Yes, it runs behind Oak Lane there. I've ordered parts for the Broken Crossing flasher, hopefully that'll be up and running again soon. I attended the ACT-on Alzheimer's meeting, November 28th, uh, there's some information in your packet, it was a good meeting, there was about 10 people there, um, the, they're gonna meet again in January to try to put together an action team of people who would like to work on promoting dementia awareness and, and focusing on what resources we have, what resources we need, and we're trying to, gonna try to reach out to the faith community and get some of them involved in this also. So, we're meeting again in January on that. I emailed, an old email from Gary, I got a new one today that I told you about. I emailed, an old email from Gary, I got a new one today that I told you about. Liza and I are working on putting together the municipalities meeting, January twenty-sixth in Gibbon. I have lined up a speaker from the league to come talk about civility and community engagement. Brian Petzel is setting up an open house, I actually sent those letters out last week. There'll be an open house here on December twentieth from four to six, actually, not seven. He will be at next month's meeting to update you all on the project. And some other things we're working on for twenty-seventeen, Paul Kating is coming January ninth, talk about art flash. We'll have to decide if we're gonna move forward with the electrical training, the twenty-seventeen, that'll be the big project. The electric rake study will start shortly after, into January. Mayor Pearson wants to set up a historical preservation committee, we're gonna have a discussion with the, some members of the historical society in January. I invited Don to be in on that also. And then sidewalk maintenance. And if there's anything else you think I should be working on, let me know.
I'm just going around the, one of the first things you talked about.
Me too.
Use both thumbs, it's faster.
I can't.
I beat ya.
All right. And are there any questions from anyone concerning anything that Jenny just?
Is that something they have to do before it gets cold?
No, but I would like it done before next spring so they can get it planted, so.
I agree.
Before the plant.
Yes.
Okay, go to, uh.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, esteemed, esteemed council, SEL, the DQ house and Miller Plumbing House will be down by Christmas, according to the ground zero owner, Jason Keister. And so we'll, that's also been a long road. There will be a medical school meeting this Thursday beginning at five-thirty at the Innovation Center. You are invited, the planning commission, the EDA, the Chamber and Winthrop Opportunities. What we're gonna do, that group's gonna interact with the group that visited the three communities with medical schools this past fall. They will talk about their visit, what they learned, what they think is important for Sibley County communities. There will also be a discussion about how the community can work together to get the most out of the medical school opportunities, if it happens, you know, the medical school is not a hundred percent yet. But everybody's fairly optimistic or greatly optimistic. The biggest issue to come out of the trip is the need for housing. That was housing, housing, housing. There is a core group of people organizing to look at the issues that make up, that make, what did I write there, Julie? To look at the issues that make up, there's a group of people with, they, they, the core group coming together and they want more representation. So, this is just a core group. Gosh, I should learn how to write. I'm serving on that initial stake, stakeholder group and we have a meeting scheduled for next week. It will quickly grow. It's, these are, you know, I've been asked, what's this group gonna do? We don't know. What's its focus? We don't know. What's its mission statement? We don't know. We're just gonna try and determine what it would be and see who wants to be involved. And we had a good EDA meeting last Friday, we had some good discussion. And, and I told the group, you know, that, that this is not a, this is not a bystander of, of, of a project, you are gonna have to get involved. We are gonna have to get involved if we're gonna get the most out of this. There's gonna be effort that's gonna be required on our parts, so hang in there. We also had a good discussion regarding the option to purchase the Larry Anderson house in the industrial park. And the issue, and it's just a discussion, but the issue is one of timing. There's a six-month notice period required to have Mr. Anderson move out of the house. We need to keep that in mind in the context of our construction season, you know? If something comes along and, and, and the timing's not right, you know, we could lose a whole year on an opportunity. So, we're gonna discuss that more at the EDA and maybe in January or February, maybe we can come back to the council for a discussion on it.
Well, we just update all the council people on that, that we have the option, we did pay him five thousand dollars down, correct?
Correct.
And the question really is, the option is that we have to give him six months notice.
Yeah, yeah.
And the question is, do we want to do that so that we?
Sooner or later?
Coming season.
Do you want to, sooner or later? Just in the context of the, there's no opportunities, you know, we're just.
Because we agreed on the price when we got.
Agreed on price and everything, yeah.
I thought we gave him the six months.
No.
No, 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 we haven't.
We gave him, until we give him six months notice.
And I think that time is probably.
I'll come in close, but, but we could give him six months notice and then if there was nothing going on at the end of the six months, we could allow him to stay there too. You know, we might wanna rent it to him, but it's possible.
That's what we discussed, you know? I think what we discussed was that I was gonna send him a letter and see if he wanted to come in and talk to Kelly and I about what his plans were.
What do you think, Don?
So.
About what specific issue, about the?
Six months.
Been going month to month?
Well, it could be month to month.
It'd have to be.
He may not be interested in.
I don't think the six month and the month to month will work, because, you know, once you give him the six month notice, he has to make arrangements to be out of there, so.
Yeah, it's all or none, pull a plug or don't, yeah.
So, that was, yeah, that's kinda why we thought we'd just have him come in, have a discussion.
What, what do we have lined up? I'll explain this. Do we have an option or a bid or anything set up for knocking it down or getting it moved or getting it out of there?
No.
No.
Yeah, we did.
The reason, the reason I'm asking is.
A bid?
It might be.
Not a bid, you had an option.
It might be one of those things we broke in with the ground zero, so it's just, it's just a question.
Oh.
You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna pull the trigger on this option, we might wanna either A, have it lined up to knock it down, or B, have it lined up to knock it down in conjunction with something else.
Or C.
Or C, not knock it down, yeah.
Right.
It's not knock it down, but move it on or empty.
Lot across the street, because, because it'll fit.
Yeah.
And if, if halogen's gonna be a huge issue, but I don't know what, what kinda shape it's in. I haven't been in it, so.
I would think it would be very costly to move it from there.
Oh, you're talking fifty just to put a basement on it. That's it, you'd do most of the work yourself.
So, just discussions and we'll see what happens, you know? It's good to talk about the options, right, Pete?
Yeah, you could put a slab under it, you wouldn't have to put.
You wouldn't have to put a basement on it.
You'd put footings, you'd only save him ten thousand dollars on a full basement, trust.
But I think we will, we'll talk to Larry and, and I think in January, like to come to some conclusion.
Yeah, January, February, yeah.
It's looking at, it's looking at time to pull the trigger, though. I mean.
And the EDA, the EDA sign's going up today, guys. I know you find that hard to believe and, but it's, the polls are in place and the sign goes up tomorrow.